Ladies and gentlemen, please stand the way councilman Taylor selects our country in the flag.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Remain standing for our prayer.
God of heaven and earth, we thank you for your grace, we thank you for your goodness, and may your face continually shine upon us so your ways may be known in our city. We praise you, God, and may all the people praise you. Then our land will yield its harvest and you, Lord, will bless us. We commit to you the land, homes, city, and our labor, and may you look with favor on our community, protect our citizens and leaders, and enrich our land so that we may be a blessing to others. Guide this meeting with a spirit of unity. Give those present wisdom and discernment as they make decisions. Give them strength to serve well in the roles you have entrusted to them, and we pray that you would be honored and lifted up in our city. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Another inspiring prayer. Call to order our Guthrie Public Works Authority meeting of January 17th. Second item on the agenda is public comments, community announcements, recognitions. Do we have any? We do not have any. Third item on the agenda is a consent agenda, item A, approval of the minutes of the January 3rd, 2023 Public Works Authority meeting. I'll entertain a motion then for the consent agenda approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote three.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from all those present then to approve the consent agenda, item A. Item number four, discussion and possible action to approve amendment number two to task order 150 of the 2021 CDBG Water Main Valve Replacement Project to Myra's Engineering lump sum of $54,538 for additional resident project representative services provided in amendment number one. Tenny or Leroy?
This is to pay for additional construction oversight of the project along Division replacing the water line that exceeded our original estimate.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion or questions? I'm Leroy. Submit your votes, folks.
I'll vote three.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to approve amendment number two to task order 150. That being the last item on that agenda, adjourn our Public Works Authority meeting and open our city council meeting of January 17th. Second item on our agenda is consent agendas A, B, C, and D. A is the approval of the minutes of the January 3rd, 2023 city council meeting. B is the approved, declaring, approved, yeah, declaring of a 2004 E-450 type two ambulance, three, I'm sorry, type three ambulance as surplus and authorize staff to dispose in accordance with the City of Guthrie purchasing policy. C is approved declaring of a 2001 Pierce Sabre fire engine as surplus and donate to the City of Stroud in exchange for a 1986 slash 2010 Ashkosh P-19, which is an aircraft rescue firefighting unit. And D is the approved paying young contracting payment of payment number five for the CDBG Water Main Replacement Project along Division Street, and that's $2,375.
I have the obvious question. On C, someone explain that to me. Tenny, how do we get a 1986?
Well, you're gonna have to talk to Chief about that. Ashkosh.
Chief's gonna have to go. How, when do you have that happen?
How do you get it back?
Oh, so those kind of trucks get sent in and back to the factory and basically gutted down to the frame and rebuilt, so that's why it's a split year model, so it kind of gets re-stamped when it's refurbished.
Isn't there a certain amount of upkeep that mandated to be done on those or something?
Well, the military has them, yes. And when they get on to the civilian side, as long as everything operates properly and the foam tests out, it's, you know.
Is this one of those six-wheeled vehicles?
It's not six, it's a four-wheel, it's a smaller, but it's not a huge one.
But it looks like, yeah, so it disperses foam is what is made to do.
Oh, more foam and water.
So it will be out at the airports?
Well, we'll keep it in town until we have somewhere else to put it.
This ain't gonna be a white elephant deal, is it?
White elephant?
Yeah, kind of like a MRAP or something where we're.
Or it's a unique piece of equipment.
I know, but.
Specifically for an aircraft.
Well, you can use it on silvers and anything else, tank batteries or whatever.
Do we have any kind of storage slash parking issue? We got a spot for it?
Same problem we've had for several years.
And we don't need the other one anyway, right?
Yeah, the other one's sitting outside.
Right there.
It's maybe gone.
So this will sit outside also?
Well, it probably won't be for now.
Okay, and I think it was.
Do we really want the liability of it?
It's you guys' decision.
Do we have, don't we have one already or no? I thought we had one, no? But it was, hasn't it been refurbished or updated or something like that?
2010, yes.
Okay.
Thirteen years ago.
That's what the slash is, okay.
One of the things unique about this piece of equipment, if it does require, because it's geared towards the airport, we're thinking that if it does require maintenance in the future, that we would split that cost with the City of Edmond. And with us trying to bring more jets into the airport and grow our airport, having a piece of equipment that has foam capability will make our airport more attractive to people.
Can I answer my question, Sean?
Good.
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion or questions? Submit your vote.
I'll vote three.
Let's see the votes. Unanimous approval from the council and present to approve consent agenda as item A, B, C, and D. Item number three, discussion and possible action to approve change order number one with young contracting for the CDBG Water System Improvement Project on South Division for 237, $2,375 in additional 135 days.
This is to cover the cost of steel casing, which was added to the long service lines that will be bored under Division Street and related paving repairs that have also been added to repair where they've had to cut different places.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Submit your vote.
I'll vote three.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from those present to approve change order number one to young contracting. Item number four, discussion and possible action to purchase of a 2023 Ford F-250 crew cab pickup from John Vance for the sum of $50,683 using the Oklahoma State Purchasing Contract. Leroy?
With the way the supply chain is right now, when you get an opportunity to purchase a vehicle, you almost have to jump on it immediately. And in this case, Ford has done a quota, and it's somewhat based on previous purchases. But we only had an opportunity this buying round to purchase one Ford vehicle for the entire city operation. And now we'll have to wait till the next cycle. One of the reasons that we buy new trucks is with state contract and the discount you get, it's almost as cheap to buy new as to just buy used equipment, and of course you have a longer maintenance period. So we only had an opportunity to purchase one. We've had three trucks. We presented back as far as two years ago, the city council, a list of equipment that we were going to purchase for Public Works, and these are, what we're placing is trucks that are 1999 and 2000 vintage. On the staff report, it says it'll be an additional vehicle, because we don't know when it's gonna come in, so we really can't surplus one of the 1990 or 2000 vehicles until we actually get it. It may be 2024 before it comes in, but eventually we will phase out one of the older trucks. We'll probably be coming to you with some kind of format, because we have harp of money through the airport that's earmarked strictly for the airport to purchase a new pickup for the airport operation that's 100% a grant. We have two more public works trucks to buy, one in parks, one in light maintenance if this one goes to streets. We may look at a new truck for animal control, but more than likely, we're going to have to purchase those as used vehicles. It's difficult to get bids on used vehicles, because you can't compare apples to oranges and apples to apples, and you can't say, well, yeah, you got it on the lot today, can you wait three weeks so we can go get bids and take it to city council? So we'll probably look at bringing a blanket purchase or resolution to council in the near future, authorizing us to pick up the balance of the trucks we need through used vehicles with a cap on the amount we could spend per each vehicle.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote three.
See the votes. Unanimous approval from council present then to approve the purchase of the 2023 Ford F-250 from John Vance Fleet Services. Item number five, discussion and possible action to approve Guthrie Police Department to enter into a grant for the Victims Advocacy Service with the Iowa Tribe of Oklahoma. Chief?
We have worked with the Iowa Tribe for quite some time. As you might remember, the last couple of times, we have our two victim advocates funded through the Boca Grant. The last couple of years, ever since COVID, they've slightly decreased that. This year, we're working on the current grant, and they've asked us to come up with a sustainability plan, which means, according to everybody at the DA's council, that they're gonna have to do some deep cuts. So sat down and worked with the Iowa Tribe, and they are essentially willing to fund us this $667,000 for doing what we've been doing the last three or four years, and that's, you know, helping them out a little bit when they need help and actually absorbing some of our people when we need to send them over there for specialized services like psychiatric or ophthalmological or something like that. They will pay 100% of the cyber benefits the next four years for one of our existing advocates. When we make our application to the state this year, we will cut that advocate off the applications. We'll only be applying to the DA's council for one. The tribe will pick up the other one for the next four years guaranteed, and then this year, they're gonna let us buy a new truck, two trailers, a storage shed for the advocates, which again, when we buy the truck, the Tahoe that she's operating right now will go into the police.
So the Iowa tribes agreed to basically give 667,000?
Yes, there's no, there's no match on our part.
What do we need with trailers and the storage shed?
Do what?
What do we need with the trailers and the storage?
We move a, we move a ton of victims, and we don't have.
You're talking about sleeping trailers, right?
No.
Okay.
No, one of them is an enclosed trailer, and one of them is an open bed trailer, so we can move, there's many times the two advocates and whoever volunteers have come up here on Saturday and load furniture, bedding, dressers, stuff like that on a, on a trailer if we can find one and drag it wherever they've got a place to rent. So they're going, they're gonna, they're gonna purchase those for us. And then the storage is not necessarily for the victims themselves, but if you've been to CID downstairs, the Investigations Division, that's kind of where we stuck the two advocates. And we took up probably just about a third of the entire office space down there with them, and they have a, they generated a ton of files that the state and the federal government requires on this grant and on the victims that they serve. And on top of that, holy crap, we've got 10 car seats, we've got just all kinds of stuff to move victims and to give victims to make sure they get where they need to be. And we needed the heck out of there, just like everybody else up here, there's just not enough room. So ideally, the preliminary plan is to build a storage shed at the range, and we believe there's enough money in there to possibly go ahead and put in our, our lateral lines and sewings that we've been looking at doing for some time but haven't really had the money.
Out there?
Yes.
So that's included in the grant? In the 56th?
Ideally, yes.
Explain the helping them out a little bit to me.
A lot of times, just like us, it's probably worse with the tribe. They, they have victim advocates just like we do, they have special people to go to court, they have special people that deal with children, and a lot of times, either their turnover has been so great that their staff has too, too much of a caseload, so they will ask us to help, and we do, or to make it easier on a victim that they picked up who might live over here in Logan County, since they have a hard time, maybe don't have a car, can't get over there, and the trolley maybe not feasible, they'll ask us to pick them up. They're in Logan County, we pick them up anyway, but a lot of times, because they're already Native Americans, they get plugged into the, into the tribal resources over there. It's not somebody we wouldn't normally serve, it's just, it didn't work that way, because they're already tribal and they plugged in to the Iowa tribe.
So it's not the police department, it's the?
Yeah, it's not, they don't have anything to do with us, other than their sheet, that position is, is our advocate.
So moved.
Second.
Yeah, I just got a couple of comments. First of all, I think, I think we should congratulate you and the police department for starting this program four, five years ago, whatever.
Thank you.
I think it's been a huge success. You've made a presentation, I think, a couple of years ago, that put meat on the bones to, to show us what, what it does, and, and I think it's been a superb program for a number of people. So congratulations for getting it started, and secondly, congratulations for working with the tribe to get $667,000 over a four-year period.
We are very proud of for us.
Yeah, that's a big deal.
That is, that's, that's awesome, I think. I do have a question. On the, on the sheet that you showed of costs, you're not showing personnel costs for, for 2023.
No, originally, we were going to do, we were going to include that in this year, but when we sat down and we started looking at it, there's such a huge penalty for combing or no, supplanting of funds. And originally, the DA's council pays X amount, and we were going to use them to pay X amount, and because the amount of money involved and what they were willing to do with, with no match at all, we just decided to, hey, you know, ask for the equipment, forego this year's salary money. So this year, while, while that advocate is being paid by the state, all we're doing is buying, buying stuff. And then the next four years.
Maybe a little simpler, that both positions were included in the FY23 grant, you can't duplicate and fund the same position.
We've already got it covered.
Yes, yes, we've already got it covered.
All right, so it was covered by another grant, not by city budget?
Well, you, I think you cover about 15%.
Okay. We did that a while back.
Yes.
Okay. All right, okay, well, that's a good answer. So, so we've got a motion and a second. Any other discussion or questions? Submit your vote.
I'll vote three.
See the votes. Unanimous approval then to, to approve the, that a grant, and thank you, chief, and obviously thank the Iowa tribe.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Item number six, discussion, possible action to approve resolution number 2023-01, calling for an election on April 4th, 2023, for the purposes of submitting to the registered and qualified voters a question to amend article number two, section two dash eight of the Guthrie Charter, amending the compensation for the mayor and city council members of the City of Guthrie. Brian, you were the one that asked for that to be on the agenda, you want to speak to it?
Yeah, so originally, I was bringing up health, healthcare, health insurance, realizing after discussing it amongst us that probably the majority, or at least half of this council doesn't need it, and future councils may or may not need it. So started looking at the compensation of a dollar, looking at the compensation of some other communities out there, and wanted to bring it to council. It would have to be a vote of the people, because it'd be a charter change to move from the dollar. A lot of the communities out there, Edmund included, we use them as an example, made a change in July of '21, where they went from 350 a month per council person to 700, and that's in their charter. A lot of these changes are in the charter of these communities, if you go look at them. It's all over the board as, as far as the compensations out there. Oklahoma City was $20 a month at one point, now they're $30 some thousand a year. And, and I mean, it just goes all over. There's not really a rhyme or reason to it. I wanted to, initially, we were discussing maybe bringing forth the cost of annualized health, healthcare divided out by 12 months for each council person. I don't know if that's equitable or not, that's a matter of opinion and a matter of this council to decide, so I wanted to bring it to be able to open up the discussion.
Okay.
It has to go on, it has to, when would it have to go for the vote?
April.
No, April, but it would have to be approved by this council.
Tonight, if you wanted to have the election on April?
All right, it would have to.
Tonight's the last night for the April 4th?
But it's open to take it, to take action on it, but also based on whatever comes out here, there's nothing in concrete. We all agree to a dollar a year, I get that. Times have changed, there's a lot more demand on council people and mayor, as we know, not just in our community, but a lot of communities out there. And I just think it's time to, to move it up to this century.
Yeah, I, I just, I did a quick calculation in the last couple of days of, of time commitment, just based upon what we all do to prepare for this council meeting. And in the, in the last, in the last six months, we have averaged 200 and, 205, 205 plus, 205 pages of documents to review for an average council meeting. 205 pages for every council meeting. And that's just to get ready for what, what we do here. There's obviously interaction with, with citizens throughout the, throughout the weeks and months. So I mean, there's a fairly significant time consumption just to, just to be ready to do what we're doing tonight.
Yeah, exactly.
That's just the base level.
That's the base, and you know, it went, it went from a high of, of 285 pages in one council meeting to a low of 94. So, I mean, there's a range, but the average was over 200 pages.
What's on those pages sometimes determines how many more hours you put into it, whether it's research or talking to citizens or.
Clearly.
Digging deeper, so.
That's just the base.
Reading the pages is, just tells you what you're gonna talk about. That excludes when you come in here and you've got an entire room full of people that want to talk to you, who knows? You've got all that additional time that comes back in that's not normally part of the community. So there's a lot of things going to do.
Yeah, so.
So I don't know, the, the annualized is like 7,500 a year is what it is, or 7,200?
7,500, if you do 625.
So it'd be 625 a month would be the start point or the discretionary point. That would be equivalent to a minimum, we'll call it a minimum wage, the lowest end worker of the City of Guthrie having health benefits at $15 an hour. I mean, there's times that I know, not just myself, but Don and I know Tracy and others in here have dedicated a tremendous amount of time in yourself, Steve, and everybody here, towards projects that go unseen by the public, and they're ongoing. So.
Obviously, we've accomplished a lot, a whole lot the last few years.
We have accomplished a lot.
So we're obviously doing something right. We're, we're putting a lot of effort into it to get there. I didn't want to make the right decisions, and I think we do as efficiently as we can.
Thoughts? Comments? Questions? Tracy?
No.
Jeff?
Yep, we didn't say that.
Don, did you?
I've kind of been thrown in as we go, and, you know, I signed up for a dollar a year, so whether the citizens think yes or no on this deal, I'll be here to next meeting. But, yeah, but it is nice to be acknowledged sometimes, you know, because even at that rate, if you're gonna be effective in this job, that's still not near the time that a lot of us put into it, but, you know, it, we didn't sign up to be on payroll or anything either, but there's transportation, there's meetings, there's all these things that, that we do that, and I signed up for it, I'm not complaining, but when you are doing those meetings, a lot of times, some of us take off work or we skip functions and that kind of thing, that figures into it too. So I don't see this as being out of line, you know, yeah, the charter was written 100 years ago or whatever it was, it was probably a lot easier time to handle the government of Guthrie 100 years ago than what it is today, probably less time consuming. So I don't have a problem with it, you know, as far as if the people do choose to acknowledge us, and if they don't, I'll still be here at the next meeting.
I do, I do think 625 is a little steep personally. I do. I, I would think that a somewhat lower number might be more palatable.
What do you propose, since, since that has to be in our?
Yeah, I, I think a number of.
In our recommendation here.
I think a number like in the, like 500 a month is realistic and reasonable. It's not designed to be able to live on, we're not wanting people to sign up for council because they're gonna quit their job and live on 500 a month, or even if it's six and a quarter a month, that's up to the debate of the council. You know, and neither one of those figures are anywhere near enough to even think about surviving on, so that, they're both good figures, really.
Well, that's certainly, the intent is not that that's a living wage.
The one thing, if you tied it to the insurance, as the insurance increased or decreased, so would that compensation.
Right.
And so maybe that's a reason to tie it to that annualized number. That's just food for thought.
Okay, all right. Any other?
Do you understand, you, you receive anything for your travels, your expenses, do you get anything reimbursed?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. If I'm going to like the mayor's conference in Tulsa, I submit.
Expenses.
Expenses, as I believe all of us are eligible to do that, so.
Well, okay, and I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah.
Either or, but I'm reading all these different cities and different amounts, and where they do determine that there's a set amount, the mayor receives more than should, because you're out there representing on a weekly, daily, whatever basis, the city, which means you gotta be more places than, than I do or anybody else, right? So compensation in all these leads a little heavier towards the mayor, and I think that's appropriate. But there's very, I see 300 a month, I hear Midwest City, mayor 400, council 300, Stillwater, 100 for the mayor per meeting, 50 per meeting to the council member. So there's various, lots of cities here and lots of differences, so.
Yep. Yep, there it is.
They're all over the board, when you, if you look.
Just like Don was saying a minute ago, we, we'd be nice to have compensation for what we do, but we didn't do this for compensation.
No, no, we didn't. When you, when you group them in nationally, it goes from 16,950, this is just for councilmen of any city size, doesn't matter, they group them, throw them all together, it's 16,950 to 91,960. That's from coast to coast and everything in between. That's just the, that's what it is. And the median of 60% of those are in the 20,500 range annually. A lot of the figures that Billy gave us, they're outdated, I'm sorry, but they are. When you start looking at their charters, they're, they're totally different. When you start looking at their charters, um, they're, they're totally different. Oklahoma City, and I don't know if you have Oklahoma City on here.
It's not on there. I think they're like twenty-nine thousand a year or something like that.
Like I say, it goes up depending upon what you're looking at. I got thirty-four to thirty-seven.
Oh.
Uh, on those. I think Edmund's the most realistic to us. It's a matter of how they're our closest neighbor and how we want to grow. Edmund started out at three fifty a month from its inception, uh, which its inception was smaller than Guthrie, uh, population wise, and they stayed that forever up until July of last year when they doubled it and went to seven hundred.
Am I reading this wrong? Billy, at the bottom of this last page says Edmund?
I got that off of the, there's a central site I can go to to look at ordinances and I guess some of them have not been updated. So those could be, some of those numbers could be out there to get changed.
Yeah, if you look at their ordinance, uh, Tracy, they just made a, they did it last year, uh, in July of twenty-one, they went from three fifty to seven hundred.
I'm going to make a suggestion though, Brian. I think if we go up to six twenty-five, and the reason I say that is for what you just said, or what you just said, they, they make three fifty at their inception and sixty years later, they doubled it. If you're gonna, if you're gonna do it, I think you go ahead and do it.
Or you tie it to the insurance.
Exactly what I'm saying, and that is tying it with the insurance, is it not?
Very similar in, in compensation.
If you tie it and it could be worded even to tie it, just that the council gets compensation in excess of a dollar tied to the health insurance employee rate or something of that.
And what's the rationale of tying it to the insurance?
Because they won't have to go back and do it again in future.
You'll never have to change it.
It'll always be tied to the health insurance.
It'll always itself.
So it'll be a moving thing like us, cost of living.
If it goes down, it goes down. If it goes up, it goes up.
Okay. All right.
Got any input, Leroy?
I'm more comfortable with a fixed amount rather than have some kind of escalator on. I think that complicates it. Uh, I think if you set it at six twenty-five, yes, you're locked in, but it doesn't mean that you can't come back. I think if you do like Edmund where their ordinance set an amount, but said they can change it by ordinance, then you get a situation where those council members have to actually vote rather than the public vote. So I'm more comfortable if you use a set amount and that's what you go with, but that's just my thought.
And that's as things go, another thirty years down the road.
Somebody else can deal with it.
Somebody else can bring it back again. That's true. I mean, they wouldn't, one thing about it, if the citizens go, yeah, those guys spend a lot of time, I'd support that. They don't have to worry about it next year going up and the next year or, don't have worry about it moving. So you, if you just came up with that number, which is the equivalent of the health insurance, put the question to them, go, do you want us to have that? And it's a fixed deal. Twenty or thirty years from now, when.
Somebody else can do it.
Twelve bucks a gallon, the next group might want to bring it up and change it.
It'll be a dollar to them.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Any other comments? At all? Well, I'll entertain somebody to make a motion then. With a dollar, with a specific dollar amount.
Sure, I'll make the motion.
What's the specific dollar amount?
Six and a quarter.
Just, just call the Navy and six.
Six hundred.
Now, is that for the mayor too, or is that just?
That's everybody.
That's everybody.
See, the difference in some of those things is you have what's called mayor strong councils, where the mayor has to do a tremendous amount more than the council.
Well, I think our mayor does too.
He does. But we are a, uh, we are a, a mayor council type government.
Strong city manager. Former governor.
We all are one of those.
Yeah. Okay, so we have a motion, uh, to, uh, move forward for April, uh, fourth, uh, city, city vote at six hundred dollars a month, uh, for all councilmen, including the mayor. That's the motion.
And you got a second?
I'm waiting for a second. Who, I'm sorry, Jim, you second it? Okay. Any other discussion? Submit your votes.
I'll vote three.
See the votes. We have, uh, from a vote of five to one, uh, it, uh, the vote carries for a submission for, uh, city of, of authorized registered citizens, if you get voters, uh, for April fourth to vote on paying all council, including the mayor, six hundred dollars per month stipend. Okay, um. Item number seven, city manager report.
I have no additional report.
Okay. Number eight is the, uh, comments from city council, Councilman Williams.
No comment.
Uh, Councilman Case.
I don't want to come to you.
Councilman Bothred?
Nothing tonight, mayor.
Councilman Channel?
Yours all out.
Councilman Taylor?
Chief, thank you. I appreciate that, bringing it up the Iowa tribe. That's, that's outstanding. I think that's, uh, that's good and we're working with them and I like what you guys have been doing. I hear around the Capitol, I've heard some people down there talking about, hey, if you want to go see what's going on, come up to Guthrie and look at what they've done on that, so it's turned out good. I thank staff, appreciate all your hard work. That's it, mayor.
Okay. Uh, I'd just like to thank all the participants that were involved with Martin Luther King Walk and Celebration, uh, a good, a good, uh, showing again, I think, uh, model program for, for Guthrie America. Remind people that the Chamber of Commerce are having their annual banquet on the nineteenth and, uh, come out and support that, recognize the various, um, and they'll be recognizing, I'm sure, the business of the year, citizen of the year, that kind of thing, volunteer of the year. Uh, so that's the nineteenth, that Meridian Technology Center. Should be a, a good evening and, and again, a, a good way to support, um, leaders in the community, citizens of the community. Uh, and speaking of citizens of the community, we're still looking for a few good volunteers. We're looking for volunteers for historic preservation, uh, library and park boards, uh, that I'm aware of anyway. Uh, so, uh, that. And, uh, let's see, item number nine, consider approval to convene into executive session for purposes of discussing the city manager candidate review, uh, as well as discussing confid, confidential communication, uh, with the, uh, city attorney concerning pending investigation, the claim concerning the Guthrie Edmund Regional Airport. Entertainer motion?
They'll move.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Submit your votes. See the votes. Unanimous approval then to move into executive session, ladies and gentlemen. We'll be.